Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Commissioner's Status Update Meeting. Today's date is July 29, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberline Duncan and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll go to our first item. Second floor courthouse presentation. It's a discussion item and we have several people here. Lisa Cheesebro, Samantha Wallace, and then Jeff Fola, you're here too. Who would like to start?
I can give an overall kind of briefing and then Samantha can jump in. Lisa's out of town right now. But a couple of months ago, Lisa asked for me to look for some space for the new district judge that is coming on board. And with the moves, the whole prosecutor's floor of the old courthouse on that second level is now vacant. And so they put together a couple of concept plans for you guys to review and take a look at. I think these are kind of overall giving some concepts for growth into the future. I think the biggest ask right now is for a space for that new district judge and their staff. I think the most logical place would be in Plan A, which would be that lower right quadrant, where it says district judge with staff attorney, court reporter, and judicial assistants. Makes a lot of sense for that new district judges coming on. That's where Stan Mortensen's old office was for reference, if you knew where his office was in that building. And then they've shown some different concepts for kind of future growth. They would like the idea in the future of maybe doing a conference room and you can see where we could reconfigure and pull some walls out. But there'd definitely be cost to that and that's not a budgeted item. But I think that would be for, you know, kind of future wishes and, you know, kind of just showing concepts for what could happen with that space in the future. And then I believe I just learned that you would like one of the other judges that's in the basement right now of that courthouse maybe to move upstairs as well. And that could possibly happen in kind of that left-hand quadrant of the facility there as well. So anyway, I guess we're just kind of looking for your approval on whether we can move that district judge up into that area for housing that? And if you have any questions about kind of these overall concepts.
The, sorry, Samantha Wallace, Deputy Trial Court Administrator for the record. The district judge is slated to start on August 18th, potentially maybe even August 15th. So this is why we kind of wanted to formally request to occupy that space as soon as possible.
Wasn't there space right now where people were before? And since we've opened up the Justice Center, that space is now available?
So Plan B for the district judge is kind of out at the Juvenile Justice Center. To have a brand-new district judge be out there is a little bit difficult. They're far away from, you know, they would be the only judge that's out there. They're far away from the rest of the judges, from their, you know, their mentor judge. So that would be the only other space that a district judge would be able to occupy.
So I'll just ask the question again then, because my question was, since we opened up the Justice Center, have judges and their staff not moved from the courthouse over to the new Justice Center? So there is available space there?
Yes. So the three magistrate judges that were located in the basement have moved into the Justice Building. But that space is going to be occupied by our treatment court coordinators who are currently located out at the jail. So all of those offices are full, essentially, planned to be full. We have a plan for each. I think there's only one extra office and it's a very small office.
Okay. See, you know that. We don't know that. I don't sit there and pay attention to every little detail that you guys are doing. That's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah. In addition, so the entire basement will be occupied by our staff, including family court services will be moving back in, so.
So there's, go ahead.
I was gonna say, all of our staff. That whole basement area will be full.
Did you have a question?
Oh, just that I was under the impression that AMP would be for specialty court. But it sounds like you've got the Family Court Services Division going there.
Yes.
So then what is the AMP space going to be used for?
That's what it is, the family court.
Yes. So we will, so there's three people in the Trial Court Administrator's Office, Lisa, myself, and then Jessica McKenzie. And then our state IT technician, Rich. We will be moving into, there's kind of that middle area where AMP was located. And then the other wing where AMP was located, that is where family court assistance will be. And there's only one extra office over there that we would potentially want a family clinician, if we get granted that from the state to move into. And then where the magistrate judges were located, that is where the treatment court coordinators will be going into.
From the jail?
Correct. Yeah. We're very much spread out all over and so it would be, our plan is to have us all located in one central location.
Any questions?
Yeah, define small space.
So I don't know, have you ever been in the basement of the old courthouse?
I have.
It's been, I mean, we've had people in closets, like we had no closet space because they were currently, they were made into offices. So it's, again, yeah, they're just, they were very small, very, very small spaces. And so we're trying to not only provide space for the employees that we have, but also try and plan for future growth, which is something that we have never been able to do before, at least since I've been here for the past eight years.
I guess you've got some shuffling to do.
Yes, there will be a lot of shuffling.
So Jeff, what about other departments? Sorry.
But define, define small. Is it 12 by 12? Is it 10 by 10? Is it 8 by 8? Is it 3 by 4? Is it?
I apologize. I don't have the exact measurements. But when I say small closet, you have room to basically open a door, put a desk, and that's about it.
Yeah, there is, there is a person in essentially a closet that, you know, is very small, no windows. It's really, it's a desk and the door barely opens.
So it sounds like this thing has wheels on it. And you're, how do you define it? How do you, where are you going to put them at? Are you going to put them in the same building that we're just vacating?
Well, I think that's what we were talking about, is in the former AMP location in the basement, that's where, you know, we'll move the person out of the closet and, you know, they'll take some of those offices of AMP and then bring in the rest of the specialty courts.
Will you do some demolition and remodeling to get it to be bigger?
Not at, not at this point. The one, the one request they've made in the basement is to remove one partition wall that was put in after the fact anyway, so it's not a, not a big removal of it because it's, and Keith Hutchinson's old office, he had kind of a little meeting area and we'll make that a bigger office. That's the one request they've made, but that's a really low cost because that wall was put in after the fact anyway, so.
What about the other departments in the county?
Yeah.
You know, because that's one of the things we've kind of talked about offline is, you know, I realize that there's a need. But I usually, I personally try to go slow on these moves because, one, we incur expense. And two, it gives us a little extra time to fully think it through. So what about other departments? Because, you know, you've got DMV over here, which seems to be jammed most of the time and it's a growing community. And they've talked about building and grounds being moved over to the courthouse. I don't know if that's even on the discussion anymore. We've talked about shifting HR around, I mean, all these other things. So where do, where do these other departments in the county fit into the scheme of this additional space?
Yeah, I think as we, we need to look at a master plan and some options for that where we can present, you know, and really there's probably going to be quite a few potential options for that. You know, like you said, there's, you know, you know, three places, different departments could go. And there's pros and cons to all of those and we will present those in, you know, a master plan idea. I think today what we really need is, you know, we, we need a location for this new judge that starts August 18th. And so, you know, the most logical place that I can think of is that lower right-hand corner of that. It, it keeps courts in the courthouse, you know, it's keeping the court system together for that. You know, and I would say nothing has to be set in stone with that because that is really kind of a standalone area in that lower right-hand corner that, you know, if we needed to move a judge in six months or a year, we could make a move for that. You know, because we're not making, you know, big changes or remodels to do that. It's basically, you know, we're putting a door back on and that's really all that we have to do to make that space usable in that lower right-hand corner. In fact, we already put that door on yesterday, I believe. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're not making significant changes with that. And I think as you look at, you know, kind of the other things that they have in here, I would say these are all probably concept for, you know, future potential as kind of what-ifs. And, you know, but I think ultimately what we need today is to figure out that home for that district judge.
Well, then let me ask you this. What expenses are incurred? Is it just a matter of putting a couple of locks on some doors? There's no IT needs? There's no additional infrastructure that's needed to set up a judge? Because I think they're on a separate network altogether and so forth, right?
Yeah, my understanding is that network is in that building, so I don't believe that's a significant, yes, I mean, there might be a tiny little bit of IT, but I think it's, it's pretty well set up for that. And I, you know, it is wired with the RIT and the state IT in that building already. So I think it's, you know, probably running some cables to hook it up to the state network for that judge.
So basically just putting some locks in?
Yeah.
A computer?
Yep.
An assistant?
Yes.
And that's it?
Yep.
I mean, I'm okay with that because of the time-sensitive nature of this. But it's with the caveat that things can change and that we, you know, we're going to look at this from a holistic perspective. And so the judge should understand that if, that it's temporary until said otherwise. And temporary could be a year or two depending on needs. If that's, that's where I stand with it. I mean, the board thinks differently.
No, I agree to go slow. We haven't had the overall presentation, so I think this is premature, except for the time sensitivity. So I would say using that one bottom-right corner, I think, is appropriate. And again, with hardly any cost to it, then it's flexible to be moved if that's what happens down the road.
Thoughts, Mark?
Well, I think this area right here is probably the prime place to put it.
That's what they're talking about, so it makes sense.
And then the idea of that second judge moving from the basement upstairs in probably this left-hand quadrant, are you, how do you feel about that? Again, I think that would be a really no-cost change on that, even if it's temporary.
Well, the, the corner, the right-hand corner would not be enough for the judges and are they having people coming in and out or?
The right-hand corner is enough for the new district judge and their staff, but it's not enough for two judges.
They have the judicial assistant, the staff attorney, and the court reporter.
Yeah, district judge comes with three extra staff, whereas a magistrate judge just comes with one extra.
Ah, okay. A little details.
Can I suggest something to you? So I've been, I was a very high-end builder of cabinets and all sorts of stuff like this. And if you take a, if you take some cardboard and make a, just lay it down on the floor so you can get an idea of how it feels, you can move some chairs in to do the same thing. Then you're just basically making, basically making up a mock-up. And it's, then it's, that's a good way to do it. Because then you don't have a whole bunch of things to tear apart when you say, hey, it's better over here.
And the upper right-hand corner wouldn't work for both? Just asking.
We haven't really spoken about that upper right-hand corner. As you can see, I'm Plan B. I made a Plan B because I had heard talk about the KCPA civil attorneys possibly going in that wing.
But everything is temporary, so would it be easier just to set up that, I guess you could call it quadrant?
That's feasible to you.
And that's one locked door? Plus a little, you have a little waiting area?
Yeah, there would be a waiting area. There's some cubicles in there that would need to be removed and those open spaces are all full of cubicles that we'd have to take out. You know, that lower right-hand quadrant is probably a little more user-ready like today. But that upper right area could be, feasibly work fairly well as well. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Go make some mock-ups.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be compartmentalized a little better. And maybe even mitigate the need to move sooner.
Perhaps, yeah.
I would have to tour that area again. I had toured it a couple of months ago, but I don't have a great visualization.
Okay.
Maybe it's time to do it.
Well, you want to do that and then just come back?
Tour and bring it back. Sign with me. I can take you up there anytime.
When is the next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay. We can do that.
Does that work?
Might I walk around there in that area where you're looking at? Maybe I have an idea or three that might work.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No. Well, maybe, since it's on here, maybe let me just speak to the, you know, the civil attorney since it's, you know, on this forum. And, you know, I think that again was a concept of if eventually the goal of the county is to get departments together, you know, we know IT is pretty squished in that upper level of the admin building. They cannot move. And so this was just a concept idea of civil attorneys. I would say it's probably a very low priority. I know they don't wish to move and I know the BOCC utilizes their resources a lot. So I don't want to alarm anybody by seeing that on here. But it's just a concept idea that, you know, if IT in the future sometime needed more space, they would probably need to shift into some of that civil attorney where they're at in the third level of this building. Just because they're locked in with their infrastructure and all the IT equipment that they have up there with their servers and everything. So that's all that is. And I would say both from talking with IT and civil, that's probably a very, very low priority. But it is certainly a concept, you know, that could be considered in the future. And that's a space that would work and they would fit, so that's why that's on there. But that would come as a part of that later presentation of, you know, if and when. So I don't want to alarm anybody, but, you know, or create a rumor that the civil attorneys are moving because it's on this plan.
It's just an example.
Well, there's nothing wrong with spitballing.
Right, exactly. So I just want to be very clear about that because I know there, you know, sometimes rumors start with that, that.
Well, this does help perpetuate them though when they see that on there.
And that's why I want to be very clear that this is a concept and an idea and it's not anything set in stone. And it's not, but based on conversations, I would say it's probably a very low priority.
Our ultimate goal with keeping the courthouse for court staff is also for security purposes. If another department were to go in that the public needs access to, they would have to go through security to get there. So it gets a little bit more complicated with that.
Understood, understood. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you. Okay, on to item two. Unauthorized removal of trees from county property, parks and waterways. And we have Director Snyder here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks, Matt, for the record. Good to see you. Well, Commissioners, as you may or may not recall, you deal with a lot of things. Back in April of 2024, the Board of County Commissioners directed that I send our neighbor at Lane Cemetery a letter asking that he please stop removing timber or trees and other materials from Lane Cemetery. However, recently, the neighbor was told by Avista that they would be removing some trees as part of a hazardous transmission line project and that those trees would be dropped and otherwise left in the cemetery for Cootin County to collect and transport to elder care of North Idaho to supply seniors and other low-income people with firewood during the winter. And then if we had any leftover, we would supply snowgroomers, the warming huts, for their winter activities there. However, when our staff went to collect those trees, they noticed that the trees were removed from the property and that they were, appeared to be resting on the neighbor's property, the same neighbor that the Board of County Commissioners notified in April 3rd of 2024 to not do that. And it is our belief that that's precisely what happened, Commissioners. And so with that said, I seek the board's direction. I did send a letter that I authored and ran through Ms. Holmes to get her thoughts on it. And that letter was sent to you for your review. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review it. But essentially contemplates trespassing the neighbor for a period of one year and referring this to Cootin County Sheriff's Office to have a chat with the neighbor. I think my authority to do anything and certainly the board's grace on the last one didn't seem to resonate. So unfortunately, it's probably time for KCSO to take a look at this and see if there were any laws violated. Clearly, county ordinance at least reads the following. County Code Section 62.109, Use of County Facilities. Woodcutting and removal. No person shall cut, injure, dig, or remove any trees, shrubs, grasses, indigenous plants, logs, or fuel wood from any county facility unless written permission is first obtained from the director. So I think it's pretty clear, Commissioners, that shouldn't happen. I did want to share one last thing, and that is that I have an email from Avista. Again, I did share that with you whereby that representative from Avista was present during the discussion with Parks and Waterways before the work was completed. And his testimony by email is that he personally reached out to the neighbor and said, essentially, this wood belongs to the county. We're going to leave it there. The county will collect it. So the neighbor was well-advised, both in April by letter, by the county commissioners, by phone call with me prior to that letter in 2024, and by Avista most recently before the wood was removed. So I can't understand what the issue is with the neighbor in terms of having some sort of thought that he has a right to that, that timber. But it is the citizen's timber and that's my concern. And the board directed me to bring it to your attention if another incident occurred. So that's where we are today.
Any questions?
So how big are these trees?
If I had to guess, Commissioners, some are close to 36 inches in diameter and 50, 60 feet long after they were removed and de-limbed. So markable timber.
And this letter that's in here in our packet is, has not been sent out yet?
Correct, Commissioners. I wouldn't.
All right, because it had a date on there and that's why I was, and it's, okay.
Yes. So I'm pleased to send that out certified should the board direct me to do that. Or any other direction you may have, I'm pleased to do.
Thoughts?
It's kind of funny in a way. In the old days, when I was cutting timber, you know, we'd always try to fudge a little bit sometimes. But this is crazy where it's at. The location is not a good place for them to be doing that kind of stuff.
Agreed.
And it's violation. It's theft.
Has there been any conversation with the person in question since last year?
No, Commissioner. Our last phone call didn't end well. He wasn't pleased that the county was asking him to stop removing trees. And as I understand, he did not pick up the certified letter on April 3rd of 2024 that was sent. So I felt that I would start here as probably best, given the history.
I don't have the exact date off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure that I spoke with him probably May or later last summer and advised him to start a cemetery district. And then therefore he could become the caretaker if they started a district, but I had no response after that.
Well, I will defer to your judgment on this, so if you think we should be doing it, I'm good with it.
I'll get the letter sent, Commissioners. I'll keep you updated on how it unfolds.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? All right. Thank you. Next up, item three, performance indicators, strategic planning, outside contractor. And this is really just something that kind of came up. The board got an email from a staff member that talked a little bit about an organization that contacted us to help us maybe develop key metric performance indicators within the county government. And so it seemed like something that might be worth talking about. And the main reason I even have an interest in it is because as a Commissioner, we always get these lovely anecdotal stories. We have to spend more money for the kids, spend more money for safety, spend more money for all these other things. But we never really understand what we're getting for that money. We don't understand what we have right now. And I'm not used to honestly being at the highest levels of a $120 million organization and not having reports to look at that tell us what's going on. It's usually anecdotal information that tells us what's going on. And then we have to make these decisions and they have fiscal impact, not only for that year, but for future years. And so I think it's a good idea if we were to start investigating something like that. The only challenge, of course, is the fact that you need everyone on board with it. That if it's not accepted, you know, throughout the county as this is a way of doing business, then it just falls apart and we just continue operating by making fiscal decisions with anecdotal stories. So I don't know if either of you have any thoughts on that? I know we talked a little bit about it and putting it on this meeting.
I am in favor of what we have, the KPIs, and I'm happy to look at expanding that. My concern with an outside contractor is opening our data up to somebody outside. So that, that'd be the only caveat. If we could, again, find some internal talent within the county to be able to have that function in-house, then I'd more likely to want to pursue that. I think having a discussion at the elected officials' meeting about what it might look like, the results might look like for them, like you said, if we got to get everybody on board, I think it's a good conversation to have.
Just out of curiosity, and I'm just asking, is what, what would you be concerned about with an outside firm? Because normally they sign confidentiality agreements and things like that. And sometimes I think it's better to have outside people who are experts in a particular field. I'm not saying that we should do that, but because they bring something to the table. And if we had this internally, I think we would already have people coming to us saying we could do this stuff. And my fear is that we would be talking to people internally who don't know what they don't know, what's going on. And going to outside firms, and again, it depends on what they want to charge the county. They can bring experience from other municipalities and say, well, here's the challenges we've seen. Here's where we were able to develop these performance standards and so forth. So I'm just curious why, why that would, were the concerns with that.
Just data breaches. Typically contractors with government agencies are very high-profile targets for data. for data hackers and whatnot, so that just would be my caution. If we had a way to not have them inside our system and be able to give, give them data to work on, you know, that, that might be something different. But to let them in our system, I think is problematic.
Oh, well, I don't know, I've, I've never heard of that, so that would be a separate discussion, but I hear you. Commissioner Everline, thoughts on that?
You can make improvements, try to.
Yeah.
Will it work? Will it be better?
Are you good with the idea of us at least talking with a firm or two? And at least let's hear their presentation and see.
The one thing I look at when I see firms that want to come in, they're getting their, their meat hooks in because they're, all they're worried about is money.
Well, of course, it's the old bid to win and manage for profit.
And so, and so are we really going, how much are we going to really gain?
Well, that would be incumbent upon them to make that case. And if they couldn't make the case, to me, I certainly wouldn't support it.
Yeah, and so the way to do it without getting our, without ruining budgets and that type of stuff, show us, show us an example of what you can do.
Well, that's where, having them give us a presentation and going to at least that step first before going any further.
Because I can remember from my time, in my prior Commissioner days, we had some of those things and it was, they're just, it didn't, didn't work well.
Yeah. Well, are you good with?
Because we're, we're in public sector, not private sector, and there's a big difference in them. And it's, there's a lot of changes that need to be made when we're doing it in public sector.
Well, I agree, and I think the challenge is we get asked for money, and we're given these anecdotal stories of why we need it. You know, "We're overwhelmed in our department, I need to add three staff." Well, what does that mean exactly? Just like your question today, what is small? What's the definition of small? What's the definition of overwhelmed? And that's where I think if we could find a way to make that case numerically, at least, that would help us make better decisions.
How do you, how do you want to proceed?
Well, I think it's worth, and assuming Commissioner Duncan agrees, that we just find a couple firms and they let us, give us their pitch and we talk about it. I'm not interested in doing anything other than just asking someone who's done something like this before for another entity, "Show us what you can do and how it's worked." I would even suggest that we speak to some of the officials at these other jurisdictions and say, "Tell us, was it worth the money?" And if they say.
You reached out to some of those jurisdictions?
I haven't reached out, I haven't reached out to anybody. This was an email that was sent to us that prompted to have this discussion. I haven't talked with anybody, I'm not, I have no one that I'm wedded to or anything like that. It's just this company reached out to us. I had another elected official reach out to me with a different person, coincidentally, who wants to meet and talk about this stuff a little bit too. So I said, "Sure, I'm always open to listening," but it really isn't incumbent upon the Board to decide whether they want to hear a presentation.
Commissioner Duncan, what's your thoughts?
I, I think there's no harm in hearing presentations, and if you want to involve the EOs, we could do it at an EO meeting, or we could just invite them to status update when we have the presentations.
Well, let's give it a whirl, but I'm, I'm skeptical.
So am I. And so I'd like to at least see what they have to say, and, and then we can have that discussion. I mean, ultimately, we're responsible for whatever we do. So let's make sure that it will have merit for the county and the citizens.
Well, let's give it a try.
All right.
I remember another time back when I was a Commissioner previously that we had a whole bunch of people that wanted to sell insurance to us. And it got to be a real fiasco, and I didn't make any friends on one part. The entity that wanted to get it very badly did not have the same kind of things that the other ones had, and way better. And so you gotta, you might step on, step on somebody's toes.
Yeah, well.
That's, that's fine.
I, I think one thing for sure, if we were to proceed with this, is that if we don't get buy-in from the other electeds, then it'll all be a waste of time and money.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, so they have to buy into it as well. Okay, well, if there's nothing else on this, we'll move on to item number four. Cell tower ordinance, it's, it's a discussion item. And who would like to start with this? It says B O C C.
Well, I think that you and I were on a conference call a week ago or so, and were presented with some information, and I think Pat's a little bit familiar with it as well. And with cell towers just seeming to be prolific nowadays, the constituents have been asking us to look into an ordinance, I think, more substantial than what we currently have. And so there's some examples out in the community, and we're just here to discuss.
And if I could, just for Commissioner Everline's benefit, what this is, is basically we're discovering that the, the carriers are steamrolling boards like ours throughout the state, throughout.
Somewhat familiar with that.
Yeah, exactly.
We had cell towers back in the day too.
Well, no, I get that, but what this discussion is, is to have a very systematic approach within our ordinance that really gives the, the county a little more control over the process. We've already been through one lawsuit and lost. We have a second one pending, possibly?
It's currently under advisement with the judge.
Yes.
So.
So this ordinance, I think, could make a difference as far as having a very systematic approach that doesn't say no, but says yes with these specific conditions.
And, and then, and with the, this litigation that's, that's passed and with this issue, you know, coming up, I've actually taken the liberty of looking at certain cities' ordinances in this county, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, and Dalton Gardens. And I've actually come up with a draft ordinance for the county that is based on all four, but mainly, mainly derives language from the Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls ordinances. The reason being is I think they accomplish the same purpose, purpose as the Dalton Gardens ordinance, but they're less, they're less unnecessarily wordy and complicated. They can be understood relatively easily by not only the wireless carriers, but by laypeople as well. But they are more involved and systematic, as Commissioner Matarri stated. And we'd like, lost my train of thought here. Anyway, it would prevail, not, it would encompass not only the, the towers we've seen, but also what are called small cell, excuse me, small cell towers that are often placed on buildings and cover less than an area, but with more robust 5G. I don't expect that to be a big issue with, in the incorporated county, but it would also provide uniformity with, with the various cities and, and what our regulations look like. So we'd like, seeing this item on the agenda today, I was going to ask for your consent to go ahead with the process of that, actually adopting a more involved, robust, systematic wireless communication facility ordinance. Ours currently is fairly minimalist in the, in the grand scheme of things.
Questions?
I probably would just like to take a look at it for myself.
Oh, yeah, that, that's fine.
Because I assume you're putting it before the Planning Commission and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys want to look, take a look at that and, and, you know, and then give thumbs up, thumbs down, or thumbs in the middle with some changes or whatever, that's fine. We would definitely want your blessing to go forward before we ever send it to the Planning Commission.
Questions?
I think it's worth a try.
Yeah, I'm curious, I looked at the Dalton Gardens ordinance.
Yeah.
What was it about that that stood out compared to some of the other cities that you found unnecessary?
It's very duplicative of language and federal law, for one thing. I mean, the, the other ordinances incorporate some of that, some of the same language as well, but it just, just seemed to be very unnecessarily wordy.
Because, well, the wordy part I understand, but like the components I thought were well-crafted.
Sure.
In the sense of the thought process that was put in.
Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, and Hayden are organized similarly.
So do they require the, the landowner, if separate from the carrier, to take on or be acknowledged the liability associated with the costs of setting this up?
I'd have to look at it, but I believe so.
See, okay, because I think that's a good thing to have in there.
Sure.
Does it include the annual checking of the frequency of the tower or the amount of radiation that it puts out? That the, the carrier is responsible for that once a year, but other people can come and they can check it as frequently as they want?
The radiation levels?
Yeah, where, once you install the tower, there's a, there's a certain amount of radiation that it's, that the FCC limits, but no one ever checks that. And so in the Dalton Gardens ordinance, it actually said that at any point throughout a, a year, Dalton Gardens could go over there and check it, and then they were entitled to be reimbursed for that engineering report. So little things like that, I think.
I don't believe the other cities have that specific provision in it.
Yeah.
It does, it would allow, when, when an application comes through, it would allow the county to hire a radio frequency engineering expert at the expense of the applicant. So that, and that's, I know that's part of the Dalton Gardens ordinance as well.
Yes.
But the, the provision you mentioned just now, I don't believe is in it, but certainly could be added.
Yeah, so that's one of the things I liked about the Dalton Gardens one, because it keeps the, the carrier in check.
Right.
As far as the.
Making sure they comply with FCC requirements.
Exactly. Another thing that I liked, oh gosh, what was it? This is what happens when you get older, you start to forget things, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I feel you on that.
Mm-hmm. Yes, exactly, but there are so many great little thing, you know, components within that ordinance that I thought were really, oh, the data. We get these maps. There was one situation where we got a map from a guy who was sitting at a desk in Seattle, and he just provided us a coverage map and said, "Here you go, there's no coverage, right?" And I, I don't remember the exact term, but where they actually have to have someone driving around and documenting.
Drive test.
Yes, the drive test.
I think that, that is in the, the other, in the, in the draft and in the cities, other cities ordinance.
Okay, so I'm good if you do this as far as mitigating redundancy in language, but.
Let me, let me tell you, I.
But I really like what the Dalton Gardens one has, because I think they hired this attorney that we listened to.
Yeah, I think I want to compare that, the draft with the Dalton Gardens ordinance one more time. I mean, I can send what I have to you and then, but also do the comparison and send possibly an amended.
I, I would do the comparison first.
Okay, that's fine.
That way we're not rereading stuff, but, because, I mean, it's 50-some pages, the ordinance. It was, it's a lot of language.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I'm trying to avoid the 50-page, but including, you know, including the good features from that, like you were stating. So I think I want to compare that one more time. Now that I have the draft together, it'll be a lot easier to compare.
Yeah, and, you know, and this is just something from my own personal experience, but when you are working with attorneys that have a specialized area of expertise, they know all the little things that you have to be thinking about in an ordinance or a contract or what have you. And so I would not want us to walk away from that benefit.
Right.
Because they even reference Second Circuit on some case law and things like that. And that may be the predominant circuit for this 96 telecommunications act, I don't know.
To an extent, I think, I think it's probably the second and the ninth, to be honest. Of course, we're in the ninth.
And I agree with you. Yeah, and then that changes too. The ordinance becomes out of date if there's new case law that could circumvent that, or, you know.
It can, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and I think that's where we're at with our current ordinance, so I think everybody agrees, we need something.
Yeah. I, I'm good with it, I look forward to it.
Okay, we'll do, got.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Commissioners, if I could just clarify, we went ahead and put the drafts on the Plan Commission review for this Thursday merely as a discussion item, just so they'd know that we're thinking about this. My preference is it'll be a short discussion with the Plan Commission, say, "We haven't finalized anything, you haven't actually authorized yet that we go forward with this." I just want to make them aware of it. Are you okay with that?
Without handing them a document, any draft ordinance, yes, I'm okay with it.
Well, I need to retract that, because we've already given it to them electronically.
Okay.
So we can just, yeah, I think we just, I think David would just say.
It's in the middle.
Yeah, we're working on, you know, possible changes to it before the Board gives the okay.
Or send them Dalton Gardens?
Yeah.
And they can look at that?
Send them, yeah, we could do that.
Well, we've, actually, I already gave them what you had, in the electronic.
And also give them Dalton Gardens.
I gave them everything you gave us.
I don't know if that included Dalton Gardens or not.
I don't think it did. I think it had the four, the city comparisons.
Let me send it to you, and then I'll, then you can send it to the Commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take care of that, just to let you know I won't be here.
I know. I remember, that's why I wanted to have this conversation now.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any other questions? No, okay, thank you. The next item is an executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and just ask for public comment right now. Anybody on the line? No? Okay, well, with that said, I'll take a motion to enter an executive session.
Make it so.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to IDOC Code 742061D.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Matarri.
Aye.
Aye.
Eleven sixteen, I will take a motion to exit executive session.
I move we exit executive session with staff to proceedings discussed.
Second.
Commissioner Irvin.
Aye.
Commissioner Drucke.
Aye.
Aye. Eleven seventeen, meeting adjourned.